Good evening. This is Tuesday, May 6, 2025, at 6:20. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one R.S.A. section 403b 2d and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure. Members of the public may join the meeting in person or remotely using the information posted on the meeting calendar on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the website under government/city council slash contact the council. Would you please join me for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join me for a moment of silence? And now for roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Council Martel.
Present.
Council Hitchcock.
Present.
Council Trenchmontane.
Present.
Council Hanselman.
Present.
Council Stackpole.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink, also present, our city manager Steve Buck and executive administrator Larissa Ricketts. And now we need to motion to order the approval of the minutes for the regular city council meeting held on April 15, 2025. And.
So move, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Pete, second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. In order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on April 15, 2025, may I have a motion, please? And.
So move, Madam Mayor.
Second. Nate?
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? Thank you. And now for the mayor's report, and I have a couple of things. The first thing is, don't forget, Sunday is Mother's Day, so congratulations and thank you for all the mothers out there. We really appreciate everything you do. And the second thing, I had the privilege of going into Carl J. Lamb School for Career Day. It was fantastic. I did second graders. Now, I'm trying to understand, second graders, understanding what a mayor does. It was a hoot. And I love their questions. I'm going to pass these, our thank you cards I got, so I will share those with you guys. You can, you can see what they did. And the questions were everywhere from, some of them were kind of like, where's my office? Which I'd like to report there is no office. So you'd have, you'd have to call me or email me. And the other thing was, one of the little girls really liked my lipstick. And that was a very important question to her. She waited a long time with her hand up. They are just so cute. It was unbelievable. So to let you know, when you teach second graders, you really don't tell them what you do. What you do is you tell them who you are and what, what they can call you, and then you say, what do you think I do? And then they come up with all these different suggestions, which are much better than what my job really is. So it was a lot of fun, so I really appreciated being asked. And now I have a report, and one of the reasons I'm doing this report at this time is because a lot of people recently just got their tax bills and they're wondering what we're spending money and why and what's going on in Sanford, because you see all the construction happening. So I thought I would share. And you've probably heard part of this report because I did it about a year ago on Did You Know? That was one, so I've kind of consolidated a lot of that stuff. So the city of Sanford and the village of Springville has to offer our residents and visitors from a quaint village the way of life and direct access to our trail system to an abundance of recreational opportunities for residents for all ages in our parks. At our airport and our 18-hole golf course, which I don't play golf, but for those people who do, it's really outstanding. And then we also have a phenomenal educational system. And if you haven't been around to our different schools, you should see ours compared to other communities. Our, our school system is really outstanding. At the beginning of each year, the mayor and the city council, we have a meeting and we set several goals for Sanford. Today I will share with you what has already been achieved in meeting these goals in the past two years. In creating this list, I was amazed at how far we have come and excited about our next steps. So here goes. Now, hold on, because this is a long list. And of course, Jamie's back there smiling because he's probably had to write permits for a lot of this stuff. Last year Sanford Code enlisted, and probably it's up even more now than what I have, 1,280 permits, conducting 1,360 inspections. Out of these, this is what was issued. 97 apartments on Summer Street, the Nassau Dorm redevelopment, 24 apartments on 12 Country Road, seven apartments on Washington Street, and that was from a commercial to a residential on the ground floor, 40 apartments, three buildings on Patriots Lane, nine new apartments on Cottage Street. DPT Construction are building two apartment buildings, one on Main Street, which you'll see out here. And then if anybody's paying attention, Ballenger Auto was just torn down, and there's a big hole there for the foundation. And that has been here, I have lived here almost 50 years, and that has been here way before me. So that was amazing to see that go down, and there'll be 36 apartments going in there. The Sanford Housing Authority is advancing its 27-unit workforce house project for residents aging 55, plus the former Springville, in the former Springville courthouse. Jagger Mill in Springville has been purchased by Jagger Lofts LLC and is in the early stages of renovation. A new subdivision off Gilmeth Extension also. 53 new commercial businesses, and there's many more, but this was about a month ago I was tallying all this. So it's beyond this. Above &amp; Beyond is now open up on the hill. The former Backstreet is now Mexican Restaurant, you might see that open. There's a new Mexican restaurant that's going to be around the corner on Main Street. They just came for one of their permits, and so that'll be opened. The new restaurant near the Waterfalls hopefully will open soon. There's a new restaurant in Springville Flowers, and if you haven't been in there for a cup of coffee, please go in. There's a new smoothie shop, an Ole's, if I've said that right, a Harbor Freight, a Starbucks at the Center for Shopping. And the Chase Bank has been built where Burger King is. If you go in, it looks like they're almost done. And at our airport, we have a new 10-hanger, a 10-unit tea hangar that has completed the grant occupancy. Another 10-unit hangar has recently approved by the planning board. Pine Tree Helicopter is now also expanding. We have two new fire stations, which will be, I think the architectural plans are progressing nicely, so that's exciting. And we have some grants that you might have heard about, YCCC being given $5 million to expand their program here in Sanford. New road construction, so pretty soon you will see Main Street and Cottage Street and all those streets, hopefully, that construction will start. And to keep that all going, so it's exciting to see around the far side of the pond, all that was completed, and beautiful sidewalks over there. And I've seen a lot of people out there with strollers now and runners. I know my daughter is a runner and she pushes a stroller, and the sidewalks are big enough and made in the way that you can run with a stroller. So that's exciting. In our meeting tonight, you will also hear the quarterly report from Keith McBride. He is our Director of Economic Development, also about how our city is growing. As you can see, together we are moving Sanford and Springville ahead to prepare for the future of our children. And this is just the beginning. So you understand, I want to say why I get so excited about all the apartments and the houses that are being built, and I think Keith is going to talk about the number of new houses that we've also had developed this year. Years ago and more, you might remember this, I would say it was probably 20 years ago, we were on committees, that we talked about, how can we get businesses to come to Sanford? And the biggest thing that came out of that meeting was housing. If you don't have the people here, business aren't, they're not going to come because they need work, a workforce. And so it was very important for us, and then we were talking about the Nassau dorms at that point, about changing them into apartments. So that was, this is 20 years in the making of making sure this would happen. And so now that we've got all this housing happening, as you can see, just, just being on Main Street, you can see that happening, businesses are coming. And we can't tell you about all the businesses because we're still in dealing with them and getting them to come. Keith will be sharing some of that with you tonight, but it is so very exciting that after all the years of working on this, this stuff is finally happening. So we really appreciate the staff who have been a part of all this. Jamie, your whole group was a part of writing the permits and helping the people through the process. We appreciate the planning board, and they're willing to move things ahead and to help. We appreciate economic development with the fact that they meet with businesses, large and small, to help bring to our community. So, and the reason I'm also excited is this will help offset taxes. Eventually that'll happen. So it's, it's an amazing thing to see this stuff finally take place. Now, we have no subcommittee reports unless somebody snuck one in that I'm unaware of, but I think this week we didn't have any. And so now I'm going to move ahead to Steve is going to do two reports. He's going to do the city manager's report plus the homeless update. So Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. The first element in the manager's report is the airport moratorium. I'm going to back that up. You'll be seeing that for the next council meeting. Originally, after processing that and the council voting on that, we, we inappropriately used the word moratorium. It should, it should have been a resolution for the policy supporting what's currently in pre-existing ordinances. We thought we were going to have to bring that back as a written moratorium ordinance, but we now have obtained legal advice and to the contrary. So currently under chapter 70-7 subsection F2, we already, we already have the language in there that's prevailing as far as the hold on any future events there. Specifically states, airport operational area restrictions, unless contrary to federal regulations and our grant assurances, the city shall have the authority to restrict the use of airport and with respect to, but not limited to, the following, there's a long list there. The major element that. The major element that applies is specifically says, special events, i.e. fireworks, concerts. And then it further states in subsection two, the application for any use of, uses of subsection F-one shall be made in writing in a manner prescribed by the airport manager, and may include permitting fees. Prior written approval in the form of a special event permit is required. That's the process that the airport manager is in now, is to get that form and that process set up pursuant to recently reasserted FAA regulations. So you see more on that in the next council meeting. The Sanford Housing Authority has very, obtained very positive news. They've been provided a notice of award from the main state housing authority for the Sanford Site-Based Housing First Project, which is to be located off in Heritage Drive. So that's where the encampment formerly used to be. The award is contingent upon the future approval of the site, building plans, and operation plans, all of which are already nearly completed. York County Community Action will be the service provider for the housing. Sanford Housing Authority will be the contractor and owner of the project. And the project team will be meeting with main state housing on May twelfth, as this is the first round of awards, and is to be the methodology for awarding. This is setting up the template for other future awards for Housing First. Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port Wells Water District has provided us notification, has notified the city that it, being the, the water district, intends to construct a solar project on their lands, currently held in conservations for water protections, and on which there's a pilot agreement for taxes, taxes between the water district and the city. I have reviewed that former legal document with the, the director of the Kennebunk, the KKWW. I've asked him to bring forward their, for their legal attorney to draft the new language that's in there. The agreement was, stems from two thousand and five. There was actually a court, court-executed document, where there was a disagreement on tree growth and the terminology. The water district felt that by, as a quasi-municipal entity, they shouldn't have to pay taxes on that. City must have at that point in time, felt that they would do, do some level of taxes. So they agreed to that on the tree growth level, and that had a CPI escalator on that. So they're currently paying about eighteen thousand dollars a year. That goes to the airport to manage the property that's in Sanford, because it's all on the airport property, at the headwaters of the, of Branch Brook, which provides about sixty percent of their total water supply for the KKWW. So they're going to bring that forward. There's a smaller, I think, two megawatts worth of solar that would be built on property that's in Sanford, and then they're gonna build a larger property just to the south of Wells, Wells and/or Kennebunk on, on their property that's, that's on there where the forest fire was. That's actually would mean the Kennebunk side of, of the, of their holdings. So they need to amend all of these pieces. So they, they will bring forward the language, I'll then put it to our legal counsel and bring it back for the council's consideration. So, alright. There's that piece. The Lafayette School, the Sanford School Board has voted to discontinue the use of the Lafayette School as a school, and return that to the city. City has been cooperatively working with the school department to perfect the transfer. The property will be listed, accompanied by a request for proposals for the purchase and or develop of the future reuse of the building. The RFP has weighted considerations for the purchaser slash developer in the future, to express their experience and qualifications, their financial capabilities, their design seminal, and the timeline to redevelop. The RFP should be released in the next week, and we expect to have responses back in the next thirty days. And then I'll work with the city council to perfect the transfer. The city will have to vote to accept Lafayette, pursuant to the school department's vote to release it. Once you do that, we will able to, for the future purchaser slash developer, we'll be able to give clear title for that property. Solid Waste and Recycling Agreements, big hurdle here that we've overcome, the closing for the solid waste and recycling agreements. For the city to become a member, a community of EcoMaine as authorized by the city council will now take place on May eighth. That's this week, this Thursday morning. So I'll travel there to meet with the executive committee and, and their director on that date to sign the agreements. The EcoMaine Board has approved the agreements, as was presented to the city council, with the amendments that we had requested. That's been completely authorized. So this will complete the year-long process of investigating the city's options for solid waste and recycling. It is a thirty-year agreement that, that we're entering into, so we have a long-term viable solution for solid waste and recycling. The municipal solid waste will be processed through the Waste to Energy Recovery Plant at EcoMaine in Portland, with electricity generated, sold to the ISO New England Grid. And they are in the process of building a new state-of-the-art twenty-five-million-dollar recycling center. So we will be participating in that. Also on solid waste, we have now received three competitive quotes for the, the next curbside collection for both municipal solid waste and MSW. We'll be bringing that information to the solid waste subcommittee next week for their review, and hopefully a recommendation as to which of the three companies would be viable for us. And then we will propose to hold and bring that to the city council on June third. We're still trying to set up times to have specific interviews with all three companies, to make sure we have a full understanding of their submissions. And we'll be able to report that back out to you. Street painting. Originally, I had just had a note in here to remind the public that street painting started on April twenty-eighth, so there's been some postings from the, the department, as far as street closures at night, as far as no parking to accommodate the, the painting, which was taking place over the next two to three weeks. But they did have a situation where this past weekend, they broke a paint line, and dispensed about thirty gallons worth of paint, white paint, from the intersection of Railroad Ave and Pleasant, for about one-point-nine miles, all the way up Pleasant, across Bridge Street to Main, all the way up Main, progressing northerly out of town on one-oh-nine, up to the Holsworth Park entrance. So we're working with the vendor. We have withheld payments for work performed to date. Some other quality control issues there, but they're submitting to us three potential, three potential plans for cleanup. The first of which is pressure washing the paint off, and the last of which would be actually having to wire brush, you know, with, with a machine to remove that. So they're gonna, going to start with those cleaning processes to see where they get, in order to remove that paint. The next note I have is federal compliance notifications. We've received two of these now. I'll just summarize it very quickly. We've received one through FAA. We've received one through the, the Federal Highway Authority, both of which had nearly identical language in there, reminding us of compliance as to the equal protection principles in the Constitution and the anti-discrimination standards, the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, the Federal Highways Act of nineteen seventy-three, Airport and Airway Improvement Act of nineteen eighty-two, Title Six, Title Nine, which prevents discrimination based on race, color, national origin, sex, or religion in any program, to include DOT funds. Review of DEI programs and compliance under and above state and federal laws, cooperation with US Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. So again, it's a reminder of all of these current and ongoing regulations that we have to adhere to. I would invite anybody that ever wants to sit with me sometime and read when, when I sign off on, on FAA funds that are coming to us, or federal highway funds. It, it's mind-boggling. It's, 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 it's almost frightening to, to, after you've gone through, yep, we've complied, to, to put your signature on that, right, for the compliance piece. So I don't know if we're gonna get any from any other departments, but again, transportation, both FAA and, and federal highway has sent us those, those notifications. CGA Brownfield Site, the EPA is compiling a success story on the city's work on partnering with the State of Maine DEP and the use of Brownfield funds, and, and also partnering with the Main Turnpike Authority and a private developer for the solar development that's out there currently. We started with Walden Green Energy, and that project was sold to Nautilus, who ultimately did the development of the solar array in the energy corridor that is now up and running and generating. The project actually went online November sixth of twenty twenty-four, although I just received this week the notification that it's now online. So that's what, why I'm bringing it forward to you tonight. There's a seven-megawatt project, a solar array that's generating out there. It's on, it occupies about forty-eight acres across the two sites, the CGA site that the city owns, and the Main Turnpike Authority lands. Both of the parcels previously were environmentally constrained, and now have an amended productive clean energy production for the next thirty years. The energy is being sold to over nine-hundred-and-sixty subscribers across the ISO New England Grid as community solar. The next piece, we had the Immigration and Nationalities Act, Section two-eighty-seven-G. City council received a communication expressing concerns from a resident here in Sanford around, that the Town of Wells Police Department participated in Federal Immigration and Nationality Act, Section two-eighty-seven-G, which provided training in and authorization by the Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, ICE, for Wells Police Officers to perform specified immigration officer functions under ICE's directions. Communication did not differentiate in what areas the Wells Police Department were acting, or why, but only that our city should not do the same. Chief Small returned a communication, which I have attached here, confirming that the Sanford Police Department is not, and has not, and has no intention of specifically being trained in the two-eighty-seven-G program. In other words, not taking that on as a sub, sub-practice program with ICE. The chief also confirmed that the department will continue to support our federal partners, if they are operating within the city of Sanford, for all operations conducted within the framework of the laws of the State of Maine and the United States. Sanford Police Department is committed to public safety for all individuals. So, alright. Fire station construction engineering for the Headquarters Station at twelve-eighty Main continues. We're in the final stages of the design development. We have our, our next meeting. We've suspended the next two weeks' worth of meetings, but we meet next on June fourth to finalize the design development. That meeting will be a final review of the site, the structural, the architectural design, interior finishes, fire medic equipment, and all mechanical systems. Design is progressing to final cost estimations. Those have been given out to the estimators this week, and they will start preparing bid documents shortly thereafter. Currently in the permitting process, we continue with the Main Department of Environmental Protection for the amendment to the SLOTA for the high school project, which is now incorporating the, the fire stations. Site plan, we sat before the site plan committee and received acceptance there with, with limited conditions, that we will be able to meet. And we are then scheduled for the May twenty-first Planning Board meeting. So we will be set before the Planning Board on the May twenty-first, to hopefully complete the last of our local permitting, but we'll continue to work with DEP on the SLOTA. Other timelines in there, we anticipate putting the, putting the bid notification and the, the bid documents out early January of twenty twenty-six. There's a mandatory pre-meeting in there in January. There's opportunities for addendums to the RFP that would be put out there for the contractors to, to reply. Bids will be due in by February twelfth. This is all subject to, could move down a short period of time. We can't put any of those, that documentation out till we obtain the SLOTA. That's, that's the last piece that we anticipate. There's been about a three-month delay in that, because it went from, you know, a simple SLOTA standalone to having, having to open up the high school project again. That being said, once bids, if we are able to award approximately mid-February, February eighteenth, it will anticipate whenever the contractor says that they can start construction, we'll issue the notice of award, and give them a start date. And it's anticipated to be fifteen to seventeen months for the substantial completion of the Headquarters Station. Once that notice of, of award goes out there, we'll immediately start the design work on the substation that will be in, in Springville. We continue to work on the leveraged fund, or the grant of applications. Our most pressing right now is the congressionally-directed spending, the CDS application that we have into Senator Collins' office. I've had continued communications on that. I've been able to provide a one-page cut sheet on that as well, for the summarizing the, the, the application, the request. We know that under the USDA Department of Agriculture, the city of Sanford does not qualify. We're too large a population, and our income levels have, have progressed beyond what is applicable there. We're now looking into the T-HUD aspects of that. I've had further communications from the senator's office, and feel that we're still under very good consideration there. We've also continued to monitor and advocate for changes at the state level. We, we had LD-one-eighty-five submitted. We did our work on that for advocacy. We got a ten percent change in that, from fifteen to twenty-five percent TIF use towards fire station debt service slash construction. Although that amendment still doesn't show up in the legislative documents. There was a further bill in there, LD-ten-forty-five, that we're seeking to support, that seeks to raise, to put in for the first time into tax increment financing legislation, public safety buildings as being a qualified cost, and raising that to fifty percent utilization. So we, we seek to support that. I will note that I, I spent an hour and a half at the LP, at the LPC Zoom meeting today. Legislation is coming out, so I've, I've never seen this process before. They, they are submitting public hearing dates for legislation that's not yet printed. So things that are LRs today, they print them in the morning, and then they're going to public hearing that afternoon. Not even a twenty-four-hour notice. Never seen it before. Not very appreciative of that. So the LPC's been conducting multiple Zoom meetings to try to keep pace. It's a disturbing process. It's almost as if they don't care, or don't even seek to have input. I just will observe that. So it's been a difficult process. But, given an opportunity, we will submit further support for LD-ten-forty-five, which again, would raise us to a fifty percent level. And that's the last of the report. I have another manager's report.
And just a couple of comments. As you can see how complicated your job is, and this is only an extremely small part of everything you have to do during the day.
It's been busy lately.
It has been very busy. Also, I just wanna thank you and Scott Soucy for the fire stations, and you are constantly seeking ways to offset the tax burden on the public. So I appreciate you're looking into not only the TIF programs, but the grants that you're constantly applying to, to see if we can possibly get it. So thank you very much. And I know your day is very packed, and you're still willing to, to do that.
Chief Soucy has really been, he, he's worked daily with the engineering firm. He's been hammering out cost in there, in any way, shape possible. The administrative team, especially our, our fire chief and two assistant chiefs, will be doing a significant amount of the purchasing for all the fire medic equipment, many of the, many of the other amenities that are gonna go in there, to save us a minimum of fifteen percent off the top on all of those pieces. So.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions on that part? Alright, move right ahead, Steve.
Homeless Task Force Report. This is focuses solely on the pending actions with the York County Shelter Program, which, in their operations. There's been multiple communications that have gone out on the, the crisis situation that that shelter program is in right now. I will start in referencing, on May first, the Board of Directors for the Shelter Program put a communication out to the city, well, to, to all, all partnering agencies out there. They notify us that you may have heard our recent news, but I wanted to, you to be able to hear directly from us, us being the board, as to what is taking place. After, after extensive fact-finding and many months of seeking financial and operational solutions, the York County Shelter Program's Board of Directors has come to the unfortunate conclusion that we must begin suspending much of our organizational operations. It's become starkly apparent that we can no longer meet our obligations to our clients, staff, or partner organizations. As you all know, the York County Shelter Program situation has, for some time, been trying to raise the alarm level about the lack of funding and the impact that this has had on our organizations, organizations like ours. Unfortunately, the group knows all too well, the ominous numbers, emergency shelters throughout the state receive just seven dollars per bed night in state funding, while a recent cost study conducted, conducted by the Maine Housing found that the cost for operating the shelter bed is actually a hundred and two dollars per bed night. Because of this onerous gap, shelters face constant financial hurdles to remain open, despite our collective efforts. In the unwavering support and collaboration of so many of our partners and donors, these challenges had a profound effect on the York County Shelter Program, which ultimately became insurmountable. Our efforts on behalf of our experienced, experiencing homelessness will not end, nor will our commitment to find, finding long-term solutions. Our board did not make this decision lightly. And going forward, we remain committed to making thoughtful decisions and seeking viable ways to have important work continue. It is our sincere hope that this will be the impetus for the development of a sustainable support system, and that that work, and that by working with the leaders and the partner organizations of York County, a robust and seamless continuum of services will be available to serve our clients and constituents. They are grateful to Barb Kreider. Barb Kreider is the former director of the York County Community Action Corporation, who has been graciously who has been graciously volunteering her time. They originally hired her as a paid consultant, an interim director. Four hours into that job, she resigned because there was no funds to pay her. So she's been serving since April twenty-second as a volunteer to help them reorganize. They would like to acknowledge the good that York County Shelter Program accomplished throughout its history. The current outcome does not diminish those results for many people with whom the organization worked, nor for those whose lives have been changed for the better. This was submitted by Kelly Deboe, Secretary of the York County Shelter Program's Board of Directors. What I know from last week through this week, we had a series of meetings on this again on Monday. So on Monday, the York County Community Action hosted a York County-wide meeting to review the shelter's current status and identify solutions if possible. Sanford Homeless Task Force also met later that day, well, an hour later, to review the elements as well. What I can disclose publicly is that York County Community Action is assisting, providing accounting and other administrative support, as identified by Ms. Kreider, to fill the voids of the loss of staff. The Shelter Program has a negative cash flow and no reserve resources to address the current and past financial needs to sustain operations. YCCAC will serve as an agent for funds that may be donated or located from private foundations. To date, that's paid no dividends. Adult Emergency Shelter Services in Alfred, which is what we collectively call the shelter, has a seventy thousand dollar per month gap that is unmet. Family Shelter in Sanford has a monthly deficit of over ten thousand dollars per month, which is unmet. Would be difficult to extend operations to allow for organizations to reorganize for the shelter, given the current fiscal state. Housing navigators worked yesterday and today to identify permanent housing options for all impacted people at the shelter. There's currently thirty-seven people housed at the shelter. I know as of today, they have identified five have been able to move to permanent housing situations. There are twenty-seven housing units owned and operated by the shelter that are at risk. The food services from the food pantry is at risk. The food pantry, we know, serves over six thousand people here in York County. And the communications from the shelter is that by noon tomorrow, they will let us know if any other options or resources have been identified. If the answer to that is no, likely all operations will cease as of this Friday. So that's what we've been dealing with as well. Our General Assistance Department has identified four people at the shelter that they may be able to provide some assistance to, but that is it to date.
And a concern?
There was a letter that was sent by the governor's office that's signed by all of the York County delegation that the state is aware. They intend to be here for support, but we don't know what that support looks like yet. I'm going to have another phone conference with Barbara Kreider tomorrow morning from my impressions as to where and how we found emergency resources for the asylum seekers when the temporary shelter was being closed down. So I'm going to recommend that similar pathway for them to explore with the state of Maine is maybe a viable resource.
Thank you, and I know that they're working at finding shelter for the thirty-something people who were up in Alfred, and that's York County. The twenty-seven houses that are in Sanford, which some of them have multiple units, a very big concern is where do those people go? A lot of them have children. You know, that's a scary situation right now. And for the state to know that they're seven dollars per day, knowing that it really costs over a hundred dollars per day per person to run these things, I'm just amazed that more things haven't been done yet. It's almost like they're looking the other way and hoping it would resolve itself, and it can't.
Well, bear in mind that we've held, for two years running, we've held a homeless workshop for our York County legislators to raise their awareness to this. And in the first year of that, we held that in December, and in ensuing short session, they allocated more money towards low-barrier shelters. The adult emergency shelter is considered a high-barrier shelter. So they put more money towards low-barrier shelters, but the normal sheltering operations that we know of received no additional funds. There was an LD that has been supported out there, but is not going to be timely and enacted, and I don't believe that it will survive the appropriations table when it gets there because there is a fiscal impact of six and a half million dollars attached to that bill. There's no money in the state coffers to put that through, so there it is. So we've got a, you know, letter from the governor stating that they're going to be here to support us. I don't know what that looks like yet because there's no, there's nothing in the pipeline for that funding yet.
Any questions? All right. I know it takes your breath away, knowing what's going on right now.
So I would envision that leadership within York County is going to have to recreate the program. There's, I don't see a viable option to help with the reorganization because there's not, there's no cash there to sustain operations, even if creditors were taken off their back.
Wow. All right. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
All right. Let's move right ahead. Under Communications and Presentations, we're doing an introduction this evening, and Steve, are you doing the introduction?
I'm going to give a starting introduction, and I'll ask Megan to come to the podium, or she can come.
Does she know that I like to embarrass people? Has anybody warned her? No, nobody warned her?
Yes. Oh, no, she's been warned. Well, not about your embarrassment, but so let me start. Megan comes to us with over seven years of experience in municipal communications. She recently relocated to Sanford from the Greater Charleston, South Carolina area. She's originally from Concord, New Hampshire, a good New Englander. We like that. Megan earned her bachelor's degree from the University of New Hampshire, and during her time in South Carolina, she worked for two municipalities that shaped her love for municipal communications. She first served as a special events and marketing manager for the town of Sommersville Recreation Department. That's where we just lost our last communications person, too. I think that is so strange, right? Anyways, I had to add that in.
I'd like to point out that I'm probably not going to make a mistake with her name-o. So I think this, Megan, I like your first name, so thank you.
Oh, good. I'm so glad.
She then went to join the city of North Charleston, which is South Carolina's third largest municipality, as the marketing and sponsorship coordinator. In that role, she led communications, marketing, and sponsorship efforts for the Parks and Recreation Department as well. In both of her positions, she's collaborated closely with a diverse range of community members and external organizations. So I will note that we had a highly competitive field for this position, and I was, her interview was phenomenal. Her background and educational experience is the same, and having worked with you for, what, two weeks now?
Yeah.
Wow, a long time, two weeks. Yeah, it's been a seamless transfer, so Megan.
Well, I have to start out by saying it's a pleasure to officially meet all of you guys. I am really excited about this opportunity to work with all of you and work with the city, and I feel like there's some really amazing projects that you all are working really hard on. I know I felt very inspired by just listening to the whole spiel of everyone before this, so I'm really excited to be on board and to get to work with each of you more and to kind of work to really communicate all the amazing things that, you know, the city is doing for its citizens and all of that. So I really, I look forward to, you know, getting to know all of you more and working together.
Thank you. Do any of you want to grill her about anything?
Hopefully not.
I saw your first monthly, very well done.
Good.
So I appreciate you getting that out. I figured we probably, that would be late, but you got it out, so thank you very much.
And we should be back on the normal schedule for that moving forward. It was just in the transition between people, so.
Well, thank you. It was very well done.
Good. I'm glad.
Appreciate it.
Well.
We all set?
You're welcome.
What's the one thing that you're looking forward to work on? Because, I mean, Jordan got the whole department started, so I'm sure there's lots of things she was unable to do.
Yeah, I think that there's a lot of opportunity to better communicate to the citizens, everything that you guys are doing, especially on social media. There's a lot of amazing projects, a lot of cool things happening in the city, so I think being able to communicate those things as they're occurring is one of my big priorities and making sure, you know, that there's pictures of things as well. I think the citizens really love to see photo evidence of all the amazing things that, you know, you are all working towards and the things that the city is doing. So I know that that's one of my big things, especially with the background in recreation is making things really fun and engaging for the citizens. So that's one of my big priorities, is trying to bring more of that into kind of some of our city communications.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. It was wonderful to meet all of you.
Thank you. All right, so moving right along, the court report and presentation from the Director of Economic Development. Come on down, Keith McBride.
Thank you very much and good evening. My name is Keith McBride. I'm the Director of Your Growth Council. Thank you, Ben, for bringing this up for me already. So economic uncertainty on a macroeconomic level is certainly the theme, the buzzword that we're hearing more and more often. The concerns about impacts of tariff in particular have impacted the outlook so far and what people are foreseeing for the future and the near future. But as of yet, there hasn't been seen a true impact on economic activity in a lot of the reports and a lot of the data that's been collected, which is contributing to some of that uncertainty. We don't know exactly what we're in for yet, but the general idea behind tariffs is that they reduce output, they reduce supply, and generally increase costs, and those tend to be not great things for business overall. So a couple of ways this is playing out right now. We have, employment and wages actually getting better over the first quarter. There's been an improvement in wages. There's been hiring. The jobs reports have shown that there is actually a reduction in unemployment, but employers are reporting that they are going to be looking at pausing or limiting hiring or wage increases because of that uncertainty, because they don't know exactly what the future holds. That report came specifically from the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston, which is looking at the New England sector in particular and finding that based on interviews and discussions with some New England-based businesses. Likewise, we look at investment and expectation of businesses themselves. There's something called the Purchasing Managers Index that's captured and collected by S&amp;P Global. It measures new orders, employment, inventory, pricing, and what businesses are thinking about doing going forward, how they're going to make their next steps, and what's in the near future for their business. That's fallen to its lowest point in the last sixteen months, which is indicating that, oh, I flipped this too early, indicating that their investment levels are kind of being paused. However, manufacturing is far more optimistic about the future as that index in particular measures it, which you would think would be the most, industry most hit by supply restrictions, especially something like steel. We talk a lot about construction, and we're going to talk a little bit more about construction projects that are going on here in Sanford. Steel is a big component of construction, especially non-residential construction. There is already a tariff that's been imposed. There are no countries exempted from the steel tariff, and yet we're seeing a little bit of optimism from manufacturing on that. It's a little bit strange. There seems to be some uncertainty and not quite clear on how to move forward on this. In retail and tourism, however, their revenues are, they're drastically, they've increased over the first quarter, but they're projecting the rest of twenty twenty-five, the remaining two quarters are going to show significant downfalls. They've lost a lot of confidence in what they think is coming, especially here in New England, where we're hearing from hospitality-based businesses that especially reduction in tourism from Canada is already starting to hurt some of their potential business for the summer. And lastly, consumer confidence, which is kind of a weird thing to measure because consumer confidence indexes don't always provide a good indicator of actual consumer behavior. And as we just mentioned, retail has been up, driven largely by auto sales, but it's still up. So the University of Michigan has been capturing a consumer sentiment index for at least fifty years. It's been going on for a long time. It's fallen for its fourth straight month, which means for the fourth straight month, consumers are starting to feel less and less confident about the economy. And they made a particular note to say that the consumer confidence index, just generally a feeling that they're getting, is consistent across all political spectrums. So even people who believe more in what the administration is doing with tariffs are still feeling like it may not necessarily have a good outlook for the economy. And again, this is not a predictor of what consumers are actually going to do and how they're going to behave, so it has a limited application and a limited predictive ability on how consumers are going to behave if inflation starts to rise or if there becomes lesser supply of goods. So it's very weird right now, and for lack of having an official town economist, you have me, and I apologize for that because I can't give much more clarity on this, although even the economists that I have been following and reading up on, they don't have much more to offer as well. We will see, I think, a lot more impact if there is going to be one with regard to inflation, with regard to reduced supply of imported goods. Will there be gaps in the shelves on stores and things like that? We'll know more about that in the coming months or maybe in the coming year. Talk about the Growth Council. We have, for the first time, implemented a multi-year work plan, looking at what we want to accomplish over a longer period of time than just twelve months, which I think is extremely important because twelve months goes by very, very quickly, and most of the things we work on simply can't be accomplished in twelve months anyway. We're looking at much larger projects and larger programs that require longer attention, and it's just a longer burn than twelve months. So we have gone from looking at the things that we've traditionally called our large bucket items, things like marketing, business attraction, business retention and expansion, public-private partnerships, downtown redevelopment, housing development, industrial development, and workforce development. Those are still our goals. Those are still the needles that we want to move. We want to see those things improve. We want to see them get better. And we've decided to kind of focus on moving those needles by focusing on what we call our core competencies, and I've put those on this board. So one of those being marketing. We feel like if we really focus on doing a great job with marketing, it's going to impact many of those goals. Business attraction, retention, expansion, industrial development, it's going to have an impact that's much broader than just we're good at marketing now. Towards that end, we've met with Megan. We're very excited to have her here and to be working with her on some marketing initiatives that we're interested in putting forward. We're also talking with some additional potential marketing help to see if we can design some marketing campaigns that could potentially bring in new industrial businesses to land that's going to be open for new development on Eagle Drive that the IDC has acquired and is going through subdivision, should be finalizing their subdivision very soon, if it's not done already. I know that we're going to be involved in the marketing of those lots, and that's primarily what I'm interested in, making sure that we're putting those out there and attracting the right types of businesses to those sites once they hit the market. Tax increment financing, definitely one of our core competencies. As you know, we are sort of the gateway clearinghouse when it comes to credit enhancement agreements. We've also been working with Steve and with our finance department on looking at the use and the application of our tax increment financing portfolio. The council has been very wise in utilizing some of those tax increment financing funds to offset potential budget expenses, limiting the impact on the Sanford taxpayer. This is a smart thing. This is a good thing, and I encourage it. We're going to continue to try to implement TIFs going forward so that we can continue to do that and utilize it in ways that implement high-priority projects that mean a lot for the community with minimal tax cost or impact. Advocacy, we also believe strongly in this. This is at the core of what we do. We're trying to work on making our process smoother, easier for projects to get through, to get the right projects, not just the next project. We're also working on the Comprehensive Plan. I sit as a member of the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. We've had some great conversations as of late about downtown infill projects, about agriculture, about open space. It's a great group. The conversations have been very productive, and we look forward to eventually having a plan that comes out of this work that will help drive us into the future. Visitation outreach, this to me is the primary way that we're going to do business retention expansion. It's about relationships, building those relationships with local businesses. We have made it a goal to get out and actually meet with and visit and tour and talk with at least one business every quarter, and we're making our way around the community very, very quickly. I'm always open to new suggestions, so if you do know somebody and say, hey, you ought to go have a conversation with this person because things are good, things are bad, or things are indifferent, love to speak to them. So I welcome any suggestions. If you want to email to me a contact name, phone number, email address, glad to take that because we'd love to sit down with them. Most recently, we've met with and had conversations with folks from Robins Lumber, with that site on New Dam Road has been on the market for some time, with Southern Maine Agency on Aging. They're a tenant at the Anderson Learning Center and doing very well, very happy with their accommodations there, and with US Felt, which is a long resident in our industrial park and doing some very cool stuff. It's not what I expected at all. Some very interesting products, and their production mechanisms are very proprietary and interesting and different. It's, I don't know, maybe not everybody's interested in manufacturing processes, but I found it extremely cool, and they're doing some very innovative stuff there. and they're doing some very innovative stuff there. And lastly, brownfields, we're going to be talking a lot about brownfields coming up unfortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it. It's something that we have to spend time communicating with the public about, so we're going to be utilizing some time on the public hearing calendar over the next couple of years to talk about it. Specifically, our cleanup, demolition and removal of the International Woolen Mill Boiler House, for which we received a $5 million grant from the EPA last year. Next meeting, the May 20th meeting, we'll have a much longer conversation about that, so I won't go too deep into it right now. We'll be talking a lot more about that going forward. Our local economic development activity, while Mayor Brink kind of took the wind out of my sails a little bit, but you know, she did such a good job that I'm tempted to just go ahead and sit down. But we do have, we do have a buyer at the former Airport Village Pizza. It's a very experienced restaurateur who's looking at that for a new restaurant use. You didn't get to mention that one, all the other restaurants you mentioned, that one's fairly new though, so I'll excuse that. A very interesting potential use there, a lot of improvements to be made to the building, to the site before it's a definite go, but that has closed so that it's something we can talk about publicly. I also wanted to mention our facade grant improvements. We received a extension of our facade grant program. We have two projects right now that have been approved and are, have been designed, for lack of a better term. They're both involving facade awning improvements, one of them at the Sanford Trust Building, right in the corner of Main Street and Washington, and the other one at the Main Street Marketplace, where there will be new facade improvements and metal awnings there as well. Both of those projects should be going forward sometime this summer, we're excited to see a bit of a facelift on both of those properties. So I did want to touch on housing, I won't go ahead and repeat a lot of the data that you did, Mayor Brink. You were accurate on all of it, but I will point this out as one thing I did want to mention on some of those projects. Main Street, Robert Street, the TPD construction project that involves the demolition of the Ballenger Auto Building. TPD is a local construction company based right here in Sanford. The Central Park Apartments project, right across the street there, conducted by Rheincorp, which is a Sanford-Springvale-based company. The Nassan Project redevelopment, Green Mars Construction is a Maine-based company. We'll excuse them for being based out of Portland, but they are doing great work here. And the Jagger Mill Project, also in Springvale, Chinburg, company-based in New Hampshire, but they do have a presence in Bitterford, they are a Maine-based company and their crew that they're going to be working with is a Maine-based crew.
Except Nassans, that was Mark Green, who was the business manager here in Sanford. It's his son, so there is a Sanford connection.
There's a lot of a Sanford connection there, yeah, I forgot about that. But two important things to note about these projects. Number one, for most of those projects I just mentioned, Sanford has been a significant partner and most of it through the use of tax increment financing to support the development of housing, which is a significant economic development need that we've talked about for years. Supporting local projects, supporting local companies has an economic multiplier effect. We're not just putting money into these projects, we're putting money into local companies that are hiring local subcontractors, acquiring local product to do these things, it has that sort of bi-local multiplier effect. So it's important that we continue to support those projects that are going to continue to feed into our local economy. And secondly, all of the developers of the projects that I've mentioned, every one of them to a person, has commented to us that the city of Sanford has been a great partner to work with, has been great in getting the projects approved and moving forward. They're appreciative of the work and attention we've put into it. A lot of credit goes to Jamie in the Codes and Planning Departments. This is marketing, this is business friendly. Maine is a small town and the construction community is even smaller. Word will get around very quickly, the more that we can continue to be a positive partner and support projects like this. So we are being successful in that, not only because it's creating the units that you mentioned, which is also great. We absolutely need them to help support new businesses who want their employees to have a place to live locally. But there's also some successes in how we went about doing those projects, so we're very proud of all that. That's all I have for you, glad to answer, any questions that you might have?
Any questions, Anne? Hey, wait a minute, aren't you on the committee?
Well, this is a leading question. Are you able to share the, anything about the purchase of the Airport Village Pizza location in terms of what possibly could be the use? Are you able to share any details? I think people would be excited.
It is a restaurant use, is that what you mean?
But can you share the type?
I think it would be.
It's a gap.
I think it would be Italian.
Okay, so which I'm excited about because I think we're missing Italian in Sanford.
But not just Italian pizza, like real Italian food.
I have not reviewed their menu. I typically don't get to.
I'm so excited if it's real Italian.
I've heard it's real Italian.
Mayor, why do we hire him if he's not going to?
I'll go work on my resume. I do believe, based on this, the particular restaurateur is very experienced and based on prior restaurant projects, I believe it would be, wouldn't just be pizza. I think it would be something more than that, that's when I say Italian.
So excited, yes. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
What's that?
Samples.
Free samples, I'll work on that.
All right, thank you. All right, our next is the presentation on the 25-26 school budget, as it will appear on the school budget referendum ballot that we're going to be voting on June 10th, 2025. And Superintendent Nelson is doing a presentation. And I see you're able to walk okay now. There you go.
Good evening, I'm back. Matt Nelson, Superintendent Schools for the Sanford School Department. Thank you for talking about food, I don't know if anyone else is hungry, but I'll try to make this brief. But I am here to talk about the school budget referendum vote that's coming up on June 10th. Just, we've gone through an extensive process, both at the school committee level and the city council level to get to this point and bring what I feel is a budget that I'm proud of under the conditions and circumstances forward. What, we look at our budget, it's one that we were very much coming from a place of understanding the economic conditions and doing our best to be able to maintain and hold on to what we had. The focus of our budget is always making sure that built on safety and engagement. Also, we're a learning organization, comprehensive learning, being inclusive, and also attracting and retaining our staff and our educators in all aspects of the school department. Our foundation, at the center of our foundation is our students. With that, we have over 3,200 students, right there with them is our staff. Our leadership, Mayor Brink, in your report earlier, you mentioned our schools and you mentioned our facilities and how they match up with probably other school districts. We're very fortunate in that standpoint that we've invested in our facilities. Beyond the bricks and mortar and buildings is the culture of our schools. In terms of that, I feel very much that we have our community's trust. That's not something that we take lightly, that's something we work hard to earn each and every day. We do that by also having a lot of community partnerships. I think that's a real strength of Sanford and that's an area we're looking to even continue to grow. And at its heart is our fiscal responsibility, trying to do everything that we can to be able to have the best education that we can, but also balance that with also the impact on our community and our taxpayers. This, I've got here, as you kind of notice, this is a comparison in terms of what our budget is. Hold on, no. There it is. There is the public notice that's gone out. That shows our fiscal year '25 budget. It also shows the proposed fiscal year '26 budget in all of our various articles. And then you'll also see where the variance is with that, so that's something that goes out as the public notice. We also have an area to break that down further, where you can also see the different articles. This is what you're going to see on the ballot on June 10th or if you're voting early. In terms of where we are, you'll see that our budget is just under $69 million. That also includes our debt, which is a pass-through in terms of revenue and expense that also inflates that number. As we've talked about, and this is something that the city council is well aware of and I think all of us are as citizens and community members, that we are facing some unprecedented challenges, rising costs in all operational areas. And that's something that all of us as consumers are facing. On the school side, that's educational supplies and materials, our utilities and our facility maintenance, and also our wages and our employee benefits are all rising to that point. We've seen the valuation in Sanford is increased and that's something that from a school funding standpoint is very impactful for us. And we also have growing student populations that bring a lot to our school department, but at the same time, those are impacts and costs connected with those for that. Just a summary of the budget. The city council approved a combined city and school budget that includes a 5.23% increase. That equates to 84 cents increase to the mill rate. There is always that possibility that the mill rate could reduce further with some increased valuation. That happened last year, that was very helpful. You break that down, the taxes for a year in a house valued at $300,000 would increase by $253 for the year. On the school side, our expenses are increasing by 6.4%. For every 1% in increase in expense is a 3.2% increase in taxation. We are a very high receiver of state subsidy of over 75%. I mentioned that valuation increase for that and that valuation increase reduces our subsidy by over $600,000. I talked about some of the rising populations and all things, all operational costs are increasing. Same thing with our special education outside placements are also increasing. I do want to highlight that the Sanford School Department, when you separate our CTE, SRTC, and you separate the debt that, as I mentioned, is just a pass-through in terms of that. So if you're comparing apples to apples, we do have the lowest per pupil expenditure rate in Cumberland and York County. And I think that's something that, at the end of the day, I'm proud of that because I think as much as this is impactful when you talk about a school budget, I also think the citizens and our taxpayers are getting really good value in terms of what we're doing. We work hard to try to maximize all the different ways that we have in terms of taking advantage of funding, taking advantage of subsidy and always being able to work out with that. So you can see that, you know, we rank on that per pupil 24 out of 24 and that's well below the state average, it's well below York County and Cumberland County average. I stole something from Mayor Brink, this is something I know she did last year and she repeated it earlier. I know from a school side, that's something that, you know, I'm not aware of and you can't help but get excited when you hear all the exciting things that are going on. And so when I talk about the value of this budget, we are one of Maine's largest school districts. We're over 3,200, we are pre-K all the way through adult education when you look at that. We do, when I mention pre-K, we also have a free all-day pre-K program that we've been able to expand. We're up to 112 children annually. That's a huge impact because that's something where you have people who don't have to pay for childcare. They get an education introduction into our school department, which is immense and huge. And at the same time, people might be able to come back and also join the workforce and being able to do that. At the high school, we're always balancing affordability in budgets with the idea of offering our students so our high school students can measure up with anybody. And that could be if they're going to some of your more selective colleges, going into the workforce. There's a lot of different things that are offered there. Sanford Regional Technical Center is a shining star. With that, we are expanding programs there. We're able to expand programs without adding tax increases because that is something that the state has recognized and gives us that subsidy upfront. So we're now up to 24 programs. Next year, we'll be adding sports medicine and baking and pastries with that. So we have over 650 students with SRTC. We made a funding change there so that there's any gap between state funding is also shared by the sending schools on a per pupil basis, which has helped us. I am extremely proud when you look at all the various family engagement activities that we put through. I would say this ranges all the way from our elementary schools all the way up to the high school. But when you're looking at especially our elementary schools, our family engagement is high. There's a lot of great activities coming in when we've got people coming in to do that. Athletics is also a part of what we do, the middle school and the high school. We're also being able to offer those opportunities for our students. We're more than athletics, you talk about visual and performing arts. Our music program is outstanding. Our marching band, three years in a row, has earned gold medal performances. Our theater program, I don't know if people were able to see our Sanford Middle School Beauty and the Beast Junior last week. If you didn't, you missed something. If there's a better middle school performance in this state, I want to see it because we have it down at our Performing Arts Center. Very talented students, obviously that facility is top-notch to be able to do that. That followed up our Spring Musical at the High School of Greece, which also was another home run in doing that. The Performing Arts Center is a shining star as well for a lot of the school activities that we're able to do, but also the national touring acts and international touring acts that are coming in to be able to do that. As I mentioned, Sanford Community Adult Education is over 240 enrichment classes that are coming back. Adult education is more than just people getting their credentials. It's also about enrichment activities that helps the community to be able to do that. Our legislature has funded free breakfast and free lunch for all of our students and so that's something that we're able to be able to do during the school year. That is huge. I mentioned the homeless situation, we know the challenges that are coming in to be able to do that. Those challenges also are impacting the school system. But a lot of the stuff that I don't think people see behind the scenes, we're able to come back and support those families in a way that's helping them on their educational piece with that. Our multilingual learners, our population continues to increase with that. I look at that as, that is an affirmation of the work that we're doing and the job that we're doing to be able to do that. I've expanded some things this way because we know the impact that the education's having locally, but I also look back to say, we're making an impact. Our students and our staff are being recognized beyond Sanford on a statewide level and other pieces with that. We had SRTC teacher as the main coalition financial educator of the year. Our YMCA pre-K program caught the president's eye. We had the governor come and visit with that. I've mentioned the marching band is continuing to do well. Margaret Chase Smith School music teacher won a national band competition award nationally. Our wrestling coach at the high school was wrestling coach of the year. We've had some of our students come back and be able to put into things to help with our community. We've had students earn recognition for some innovative solutions to student hunger. Our resource officer at the middle school received the prestigious SRO Award for Exceptional Service, which is one of the top awards for the state. One of our science teachers had a presidential teaching award for exemplary instruction. SRTC's captain in the fire service program was honored also with a prestigious award for commitment and safety. SRTC students in the Skills USA dominated and did well there showing our piece. We had high school students winning the state drug awareness contest. We've hosted a lot of statewide things where people are coming to Sanford to be able to get those pieces. Our athletic director got a Rising Star Award for that. So a lot of things that we come back are pride. We do our best to try to promote and get out to highlight all the good things that are happening for the district. So June 10th is the budget referendum for the schools. We're at the one polling location for the city, it's down at Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center. The polls will be open seven to eight. If people are not going to be able to be able to vote that day, there's also in-person absentee voting happening right here. absentee voting happening right here at City Hall, Monday through Thursday, 7:30 to 5:30. So if there are questions about the budget, please let us know. But as I mentioned, we're going to be doing our best to continue to be able to get the word out for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to point out that the city council reviewed the budget, and I know it was very painful that we had to cut a lot of the items out. We feel we got it to the point that the citizens of Sanford can afford it. We can't afford to go any lower. We did our best, knowing that what the income level is within Sanford, our boundaries and stuff, and who's paying the taxes here. And I really appreciate that the school committee came back with the cuts that they felt were appropriate. So between the two teams, we seemed to come up with a very good budget, and I have no problem with going and voting a yes on this budget. I'm very pleased with the work that we all put in, and people really went over line by line by line. So we really scrutinized this. So your committee and this committee, we didn't just look at the overall. We really dug in deep. So I think that the Sanford citizens should be very proud of the budget that we have presented. I'd also like to point out that our schools, Sanford High School and all the kids coming up through our schools, we place kids in the highest colleges out there. There isn't an Ivy League school, I think, across America that we don't place a child at. And we've had kids go on for doctorates to become engineers and doctors, and they go beyond even the first four years. I love the connection with YCC that our kids can get two years virtually free before they, and those credits are accepted at the university level if they want to go on for four years. So I think that's an amazing commitment that they've made and that our system has made to join forces to help Sanford students take a giant step forward. Also, the technical school part of our high school, people can walk out of that high school with a very good paying job.
Yep.
It is just amazing. So I think that our citizens should be honored by going and voting yes on this budget. So thank you for your presentation. I really appreciate it. Any comments from the council? Bob?
Yeah, I just want a clarification on early voting. Early voting has started now?
No.
Or does it start like May 10th or something like that? I don't know if it's 30 days or...
My understanding is it has started already.
Yeah, so I signed it.
I called this week and...
Okay. All right. So we'll make that clear to the public that early voting has started. We'll just call it during the workday. You can come up and vote, and hopefully people take the opportunity to do that.
And where are they voting, Steve? Are they coming up here or is it downstairs? Do we know?
Yeah, they're doing it downstairs.
Downstairs, okay. Good to know. Because usually somebody will catch me in the hall and ask, where do I go?
Yep.
And I like to kind of have an idea. So, all right.
Madam Mayor, may I just say it is Teacher Appreciation Week?
Yes.
I've seen some amazing social media posts and teachers being celebrated, very rightly so, and I would say that early voting would be a great way to celebrate teachers this week as well, so maybe we could put a plug out for that.
All right. Thank you. Jonathan?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the numbers are a 6.4% increase for the school budget. So just so everybody's aware, it was a little bit muddy in the presentation, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Steve?
So I want to thank the superintendent for clearing something up. I'm walking into my office, and Megan, our communications person, randomly says to me, like I can remember everything, right? "Hey, Steve, how many programs does the CTE have at the Sanford High School?" Right? She says, "Well, I see they say 22 on the website, but I count 26." We know it's 24 now.
And coming soon is a nail tech program to go along with our cosmetology program, which is super popular.
That is fantastic.
We're continuing to try to meet needs and to be able to come back and be able to do that. So before you, and like I mentioned, a lot of that has to do with the state funding those programs upfront. As you know, in the past, we had to fund those programs and get reimbursed two years later, and that just made it practically impossible with these tight budgets to be able to do that. So we'll continue to take advantage of the opportunities that we have to be able to.
Megan was out today at Public Works documenting the students' work, doing simulations on dumpster fires and all that sort of deal.
Yeah, I heard there's a dumpster, we were doing dumpster fires today. Yep, yep.
Now, let's not encourage the kids to know about that.
Yep, yep. I deal with dumpster fires sometimes, but it was good to hear that our students were on top of this one.
And Larissa pointed out it was supervised dumpster fires.
Yes.
So that is good. Because I remember a time when we had kids setting fires to the dumpsters in Sanford, so supervised. Larissa, she keeps us straight, so she's got the scoop on the voting.
Yes.
Well, I can't really take credit. Both our city clerk and our city treasurer have texted me because they're watching this. Yes, voting has started. It is taking place in the city clerk's office, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Can I send my apologies to the superintendent that he's missing yet another school concert this evening?
Yes, yes.
High school is having their concerts.
Yeah, it's the last one for our high school seniors with that. So we are recording it. Sarah's recording it, so I'll be able to get her word. I was down there earlier before. We also had our art show as well, combined with that, and wow, we have some very talented students that would just blow you away in terms of looking at that, so.
So middle school tomorrow, if anybody's interested in the middle school efforts.
Concert, yep.
Concert, yep.
Middle school concert.
At the high school, at the SPAC.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, on to public participation. I didn't see any signatures down there. Do we have anybody online? All right. Thank you. Let's move on to public hearings. I'm going to open this public hearing on the proposed changes to the City of Sanford ordinances pertaining to Article 2, Chapter 120 fees. Chapter 220 transfer station subsection 220-5A fees. Chapter 149 subsection 6.8 vacant building fees. Article 3 subsection 226-28 digging permits. Chapter 78, Article 8 subsection 78-29 permit fees. And Article 2 subsection 78-4 impoundment fees and to certain other municipal fees. And do we have somebody to address this? Is this where Ronnie's going to come down and help us with this?
This is where our finance director is going to present on this topic because nobody would put something so complex forward, other than our finance director.
No crutches tonight. Excellent.
I know. That's awesome. Good evening. As part of the fiscal year '26 budget process, the city manager recommended and the city council approved a 10% increase in certain municipal fees. This adjustment supports $158,000 increase in fees and a $74,000 increase specific to the Pay As You Throw program. The proposed changes impact several sections of the City of Sanford ordinances. If you're okay, Mayor Brink, I'm going to waive the chapters and the ordinances, but it's general fees, transfer station fees, vacant building fees, digging permits, permit fees, impoundment fees, and lastly, certain other municipal service fees. I do want to share that all proposed fee increases have been reviewed by the appropriate department head. We wanted to ensure that each recommendation is operationally justified, service-based, and aligned with departmental needs and priorities. In your grandicus package, you'll find a comprehensive list of all proposed changes effective July 1, 2025. Also included is a redlined version of each relevant ordinance section, clearly showing the changes from the current fiscal year. I'd like to clarify one specific item on the list, which is summer camp rates. While the new rates are included in the fiscal year '26 schedule fee, they are intended to be effective for the 2026 summer camp season, not this summer of 2025. The effective date remains July 1, 2025, but the programming impact for the summer will be 2026. I did speak with Brady briefly, and he'll ensure this is clearly communicated to families well ahead of the registration period. In summary, the proposed 10% increase is consistent across all applicable fees. All changes have been reviewed by the department. And lastly, as you know, this item needs to be read onto occasions. This is the first reading, and I will come back before you for a second reading on May 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. And you will see that again under new business. We'll be talking about it. And one of the reasons, I can't fathom, this is the multiple 30 pages. So I'm just amazed you didn't want to go line by line through this because I know how you like to present to us.
I do. I do want to mention that all impacted department heads are either online or in person. So when we get to the agenda item, if you have any specific questions, he's here to answer your questions. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody to speak in favor? Anybody to speak against?
Amanda?
Nope, she doesn't have it up now. Oh, now it's up. Okay. Diane Conley?
I just have a question. It's not neither for against or whatever. My question is this. It says in the, I didn't read the full packet in at time today, but what are the other certain municipal fees? Are they laid out in the packet?
You, I couldn't understand what you were saying, this kind of muffled. Did anybody?
Is this better?
So it's in the big packet?
It's in the big packet online.
List.
It is listed. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, you'll have to scroll down because it's, if you, I think you just go to the first section, it just shows a public hearing notice, and it doesn't have all the fees listed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Close this hearing. I'll open another public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Archer Farms LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivator license at 72 Emory Street, Unit 307, Sanford, Maine. So anybody to speak for? Anybody to speak against? Seeing none, I declare this hearing closed. All right, under consent agenda, are there any questions or comments from the council on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Let's move right on to old business. In order to accept a proposal from Brown &amp; Brown for Maine paid family medical leave through municipal, metropolitan, thank you very much. Maura, I need you sitting back here. Metropolitan Life Insurance. I should have just said MetLife, and I would have been okay. All right, Steve, are you going to present that?
Yes, I can present on this.
We can't call Ronnie down again?
Not after I...
We've got to look. What?
So at the last council meeting, the city council appropriately tabled the proposals that were on the table for the Maine Paid Family Medical Leave Act. To remind everybody, the state of Maine has put forward a new law that is implementing a, for the first time, a paid family medical leave act for the state of Maine whereby people qualify for certain medical events to be paid up to, I believe, a 60% of their wage for defined period of time for outages. The state proposes, they're doing a state program on this whereby there is a 1% tax on all payroll. 50% of that is paid by the employer, 50% of that is paid by the employee. As an employer, we do have the option to go to a privately insured program that's equivalent to or better than what the state has implemented here for us under the proposal. Pursuant to that, we engaged in a process in the budgeting, or late in the budgeting process, but during the budgeting process with our school department because we share an employer identification number. We went into, excuse me, a competitive process whereby an agent gave us competitive quotes from various insurance agencies, three of which Standard, Unum, and Symetra. We reviewed those proposals. We are going to go forward. We came forward to the city council the recommendation for Unum that at that time was 0.933%, as opposed to the state's 1%. So there were savings in both the insurance rate, as well as there were also savings pursuant to opting out and paying no premiums until such time as the state mandates that the program goes into effect. So for that period of time, we would forego premiums in there. That was a large part of the savings that were calculated in. So we came forward with a recommendation with the concurrence of the school department and the city for that quote under Unum. In that time period after, it became known to us several days after the offer was actually pulled, that Unum had pulled their offer to the city and the school off the table, and then contacted the insurance agent and asked for the agent to come with Unum to present on that aspect. Unum declined to do that in public session. So we were then given an offer by Symetra. Yep, Symetra. It was at 0.98, so very little savings there, other than the delayed payments. From there, our finance and HR department was engaged by another company, Brown &amp; Brown, who offered to further quote us on medical paid family medical leave. So we engaged in that process, thus the council tabled. So before you tonight, pursuant to that process, we have an even more competitive quote by Metropolitan and Life Insurance. We're recommending to go with that through the Brown &amp; Brown agency. We reviewed this with our school department. They concur with that as well. Pursuant to that proposal, we now have a rate at 0.85%, which is extremely favorable. The school department will still have to have a $10,000 life insurance policy for a secondary line on their employees, but this is better than the next competitive quote from Unum at 0.933%. Unum did put that back on the table, but the school department would have to have a $25,000 policy of life insurance for all employees. So for the city, our three-year anticipated savings, there's $40,614 in the first year, $139,440 in the second year. In the third year, we're down to $24,360, so there's a three-year savings of $204,414. So this comes with our recommendation from both the city and the school department to engage the quote given to us for MetLife at 0.85% with Brown &amp; Brown. That comes with a two-year rate guarantee for what we're calling the three-year period.
Thank you. Before discussion, could I have a motion, please? Maura?
I'll make the motion to approve the proposal.
The second, Pete?
I'll second.
And any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. All right. In order to appoint Mark Dyer to the Sanford Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to fill an unexpired term ending December 31, 2025, and in case you guys remember who Mark is hiding in the back, he is a Sanford resident and a major in the Sanford Police Department. There is no conflict of interest with his employment by the city, and he is being brought forward at the recommendation of the Appointment Subcommittee as an appointee to fill the opening on the Sanford Housing Authority Board. The executive director, Diane Small, indicated that she, that it is common for a housing authority to have a member of the local police force on its boards to help provide the connection to the community. All right, could I have a motion, please? Bob?
Move we approve, and I have a quick question.
Okay, yep. A second? Jonathan?
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, there's no compensation for him serving on the board.
Correct.
So there is no conflict of interest because there's no compensation.
That's right.
And I think that's an important point for everyone to know.
Absolutely.
So that's what I had to say.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ann?
I would just like to thank Mr. Dyer for being willing to serve the community in this fashion. Thank you.
All right. I appreciate it, too. I feel like it's my little boy growing up because he was, started with me at the junior high. Sorry, I can't help myself. All right, all those in favor? Thank you. You're on, you're appointed. Thank you very much for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
The next, in order to approve proposed changes to the City of Sanford ordinances pertaining to Article 2, Chapter 120 fees. Chapter 220 transfer station subsection 220-5A fees. Chapter 149 subsection 6.8 vacant building fees. Article 3... article three subsection two-two-six dash two-eight digging permits, article seventy-eight, excuse me, chapter seventy-eight article eight subsection seven-eight dash two-nine permit fees, and article two subsection seventy-eight dash four impoundment fees. And to certain other municipal fees, this item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the first reading. Are there any questions? Ann?
Looking for clarification on the recreation fees. I pulled the March eleventh budget meeting notes, and we specifically discussed not increasing the recreation. It says, it refers it to recreation, but the conversation in the preceding agenda item was actually around the summer camp fees. And we said we would hold those through the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. So I'm-
I think that's what she said when she came to present.
So we have an approved increase, so we're increasing them for the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, kind of in advance.
Yes.
Well, I'm just, that was the conversation at budget time, that we'd hold them again. That was my understanding, meaning they wouldn't be increased as per this ten percent increase, which would be for the next year, too.
The dialogue was around, because of the timing. So when they were increased the last time, it is actually this summer camp that's seeing that increase for the first time. So there was no increase that was gonna take effect for this, this, this season. The temp, the increase to the program by being approved now will hit the, will hit the fiscal year for, starting July first. They won't see that until the following year. So that was the clarification, because it appears as though, it's, again, it's the timing. So that increase, they won't, they won't see that until they sign up for the summer camps for 2026.
I'm in support of it, it's just that wasn't what I walked away from that meeting discussion, feeling that the majority of the council was for, so I just wanted to get clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jonathan?
Yeah, I just, most of these look fine. I just had a question about the antifreeze in oil. It looks like there's currently no fees for disposal of those, because I know some places will burn used oil or antifreeze can be recycled. I just saw one up to like eight dollars a gallon for, like, I assume that's just regular used motor oil, like somebody changes their own oil. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, so we have to pay, so a company picks that up from us, and we have to pay for the disposal of that oil. We don't have a waste oil burner ourself that burns the oil.
Okay, and it's costing us that much to get rid of that? Okay. I know that some of the local places, like Autozone and Walmart, at least used to take it, but-
I change my own oil, I take, take it back to where I buy my oil, and I hand it over to them, and I sign the sheet, and I buy my new oil, and I go back home and change my oil, so.
Okay, if that's just based on pretty much actual costs, um-
Yes.
Is there a current cost right now? Because it-
Beg your pardon?
It looks like, the way this is written up, it looks like there is not a current cost to dispose of that material.
Matt, is there a cost? I see you online.
Yes, there is a cost. So we used to have it disposed of by Clean Harbors from the city garage. Clean Harbors is now known as Murphy's. They actually pumped out our clean waste oil tank today. But they also pick up contaminated waste oil, and that's the only type of waste oil that we receive from the public. We maintain a current list of vendors around town that do continue to have a waste oil burner. That list does change from time to time. But when someone comes in with clean, uncontaminated waste oil, we provide that list and tell them, you know, seek out these companies, because they'll accept it for free. We will accept waste oil that's contaminated with things like water or gasoline or antifreeze. But we charge at least as much as the cost for us to dispose of it. So historically, that's been seven dollars a gallon. And with a ten percent increase in general, we're just rounding up to the nearest dollar.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just, it didn't look like there was anything currently listed.
I would have to check, I could check with Clean Harbor slash Murphy's as recently as today and find out for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so this was the first reading, and at our next meeting will be the second reading. Okay? Good, let's move on. In order to authorize the city manager to act on behalf of the city council to appoint attorney Dylan Carson Clausen to replace Charles Nickerson as successor trustee of the Edward Goan Trust and authorize him to act that, on that capacity on behalf of the City of Sanford per the direction of said trust. Steve, do you have any comments to make on this one?
It's a very brief comment on this. Attorney Nickerson passed away recently, so is no longer able to fulfill that. So the firm is asking for your authorization for that to be transferred to attorney Clayson. And the paperwork is attached here, too. I need the council's authorization in order to sign on your behalf to so direct that change in trustee.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion, please? Nate?
I'll move.
Jonathan?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. In order to affirm a fixed-price fuel oil contract with, is that Rinaldi? Energy for thirty-eight thousand gallons of number-two heating oil at the fixed price of two dollars and forty-four cents per gallon. Can I have a motion, please? Jonathan?
I'll motion to move forward with the fuel contract.
A second, Pete?
I'll second. I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Jonathan?
More a comment, really. I did a quick look online, and that seems like it's a very good price. So thank you for whoever worked on that.
Thank you.
So Alex Hamerly is our guru, he watches the markets on a steady basis. He has the crystal ball that he rubs to predict when that strike point is. His accuracy has been outstanding on that in the years past. So when he, when he brought this forward pursuant to the city's policies, we have the pre-delegated authority to strike that when the price hits. Then we have to bring it back for subsequent approval by the city council. The two forty-four strike point is thirty-seven cents below what we had budgeted for the year, so we're very, very pleased with that. And again, I thank, thank you, thank Alex for his diligence in continuously watching this in the markets. Yeah, the thirty-eight thousand gallons is just ours, but we have, we have the school department, right, correct? Or is that with the school?
The thirty-eight thousand gallons, just the municipal operations. The school department also signed a contract for their usage at the same price. Their contract is, our, ours, forty, forty-six thousand gallons.
And we have the school department this year as well?
Yes.
Yes. Is it Acton or Shapley?
It's Acton.
Acton.
All right.
Acton's, the purchases, typically twenty thousand gallons. When people are for pricing, we-
Thank you. Ann?
I just wonder if we could borrow your crystal ball for a couple other questions we need to answer?
You know, I have, I have to say, when I was the principal of the junior high, do you remember those black balls that had the eight on it? And you'd turn it upside down and say yes or no, or give you a wise guy answer? Well, I, mine was broken, and it always said yes on the bottom. So I would bring kids in, and I'd say, well, you know, this is what the discipline is for what you did. And why don't we just see what the crazy eight ball has to say? And we'll go with, if it says yes, then we'll go with the punishment, the consequence. If it says no, then you're free to go. And so they'd turn it over, and it would always come up yes.
Madam Mayor, Mike's getting upset over there, she's one of your students.
So you could have one of those, too. So all those in favor? All right, thank you. You know, in every job, you have to find humor, just keeps you going. The last one. In order to consider a request to fly a Rainbow Pride flag on the flagpole in front of City Hall for the month of June pursuant to the resolution regarding display of flags on the city property adopted July fifth, 2022. And in your packet, there was that resolution. So before we have a discussion, can I have a motion, please? Bob?
Move we approve.
Thank you, a second?
I would second that.
Ann? All right. Any discussion? Jonathan?
I will note my usual disapproval. I think it's a very divisive flag, and it's also been extremely politicized, so I don't agree with this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Pete?
Yeah, I was surprised. I have gay and lesbian family members that love them very much. They don't like the flag, they asked me not to support this. I was very shocked, because I don't care who's who if you're in love, so that's not the issue. So I'm not gonna support it.
And you made that comment to me before, so I have a large variety of gay, well, actually, the LGBTQT population in our, in our church. And so I thought I'd ask them. They were all in favor of it, because it showed, they could just see it in the community. The community just supported differences. So there's, there's two sides to that.
Yeah, I got more, they don't wanna be secular, they don't wanna have a flag saying who they are. They're just normal American people, so that was their take, so.
So I'm just saying that there are both. So you've got the few people in your family, and then we have the-
Like, I quite lie, that actually pulled me, so didn't expect this.
Yeah, so just letting you know, there's both. So you just do whatever. Anybody else have any other comments? Okay, all those in favor? It's four. All those opposed? Five, oh yeah, five. Including me, there's five. And two opposed. All right, so it passes. Thank you. Any council member comments? Maura?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to the fire department. On Sunday night, one of my tenants decided to burn their, they put, they put all the stuff for cookies on the top of their stove, mistakenly turned on a burner. The butter that they were softening melted as long, as well as the plate. It was quite smoky in her apartment. She, of course, had gone out to pick up her granddaughter. And I was able to figure out which one it was, let them know, I don't know if she's in there or not, it's very smoky. They did a great job, you know, getting everything back in order. She's cleaning today. So that was, you know, it was a great experience, and you see the young firefighters, you know, doing their job and being, you know, continually trained by the older firefighters. And then last night, around twelve fifty-something, I got a call that the smoke alarms were going off in the other building. And I'm thinking, well, this seems like they're just trying to, you know, be, get the attention, I don't know. But so, after we found the smoke, the smoke detector that was going off, which was on the third floor, even though it said it was on the second floor, because they had done, via the European method, ground for second, third. Figured that out. The guys are up there, again, young firefighters, they blew out the smoke detector and out flew a spider. So I just, you know, they do a great job. There was a little bit of a chuckle from one of the young firefighters when they said, oh yeah, we blew out a spider. And just, just so you never know what it's gonna be, but thank you for them. They have to put on, I don't think people realize, when there's a call for a smoke alarm, they have to put on all the gear. And, you know, sometimes they need it, sometimes they don't, but they have to put on all the gear. You feel kinda bad for them, it looks really heavy to lug around, and get their axes and their smoke, their air things. They've got all the heavy outfit, and so, but they did a great job, my tenants are always appreciative. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ann?
I just want to share my gratitude to the Sanford community for showing up for the Sanford Backpack Program and helping fill three thousand bags of food for Sanford students, pre-K through twelfth grade. It makes a huge difference in the lives of our students to know that they have access to food over weekends when there's a meal gap from Sanford, from the school lunch program. And then I want to share that Friends of Downtown has a really exciting event coming up on Thursday, May twenty-ninth, at five-thirty in the Memorial Gym Cafeteria. I'll send invites to everybody, but it's to go over the culmination of two years-plus work of gathering stories from community members and people that are vested here in the community about Sanford's heart and soul, and going over those exciting statements, and then also working on some action items in terms of how we can put those statements to use and/or work towards, some of those statements are aspirational, so how we can get to move forward with those statements. Erin Moriarty will be there with a table on the comprehensive plan work, which will be exciting as they do integrate well together in conversation. So I'm really looking forward to that, five-thirty, Memorial Gym Cafeteria, lower level. And that's on our social media page for Friends of Downtown. And then, oh my gosh, there's one more thing I wanted to mention. And I lost it, so, thank you.
It'll come, it comes back, raise your, yeah. John, excuse me, Nate, and then, then Pete?
Yeah, I just wanted to extend my sympathies to the family of Rodney Larendo. Rodney Larendo was a sitting member of the Sewers District who passed away a couple weeks ago.
That's right, I saw that.
Yes, so we'll be seeing, probably in the coming weeks here, a request from the Sewers District for an appointee of a new trustee, and that is wise, so I just wanted to, you know, extend my sympathies to the family.
All right, thank you. Pete?
Mother's Day is Sunday, it's your day to all the moms and single dads out there, so I hope you all celebrate and have a good family time. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
This is totally self, I did, it's self-serving, though, but exciting for city staff. Franny's Mini Donuts is opening up on Thursdays, beginning this Thursday.
So-
Yeah, that's good news.
The only warning is that there won't be croissants on Thursdays, because, because he, he can't get up at two AM.
Isn't that the only reason we go in?
Pros and cons, pros and cons.
But we'll have smoothie bowls and breakfast sandwiches and donuts and all that good stuff, but no croissants, sorry.
You know I'm addicted now, right?
You just have to come for Fridays.
And I become addicted to the breakfast sandwiches on the facasha.
Oh, those are awesome.
Breakfast sandwich on facasha. I do it with avocado, because I don't eat beef or pork or anything, but, oh, yeah, it's now my, at least once a weekend, I like to have that.
All right. Well, thank you. Now, anything for the agenda? All right, it's now ten-